Alright, so gravitational attractive force between two masses is F. The masses move twice their initial distance with this gravitational attractive force. So you got F. Okay, this is m1, m2, r2, okay? So that's just as it is, right? So this equals F. So now, what you're doing, m1, oh wait, they're equal. So this just goes m squared, right? And then, if the masses move twice their initial distance... So they're gonna go 2r with square, okay? And so, this is gonna be GM squared for r squared, so... Well, it's 1/4. Okay, and so, there it is, d.
Can you remember 23?
I'll give it a shot. So what we're looking at right now is some questions that are online. And the question that was online stated that we had an original setup of two masses that are the same, actually I should make that a one. And then, it was doubled. Okay? I'm just letting the people who are listening. Okay, so now we're looking at what, 22 you said?
23.
23?
21 and 22 works, so it's kind of the same.
Well, let's give it a shot. Let's see how this works. This could be horrible or it could be fantastical. Okay, two spheres with a radii, radii, radii of r, so it's sphere, so you're gonna need the volume, okay? Are in contact with each other and attract each other with a force F. If the radii of both spheres are cut in half, remains the same... Okay, what remains the same? If both of the spheres are cut in half while the density remains, yes, okay, good. Remains, so it's the same material. It's kind of that one question that we had before. What is the new gravitational force between them? So you guys kind of know, we're gonna go... So, first of all, let's see what the heck m is density v. So we need to see what v increases or decreases. It's a sphere, so volume of a sphere is equal to 4 thirds pi r cubed. And, the question stated that both are cut in half, so this time r is by 1/2. And I don't care about this part. So that's gonna be 2 times 2, 4, 2 times 4, 8, so 1/8. Okay? So, now we know that the mass is 1/8. So when you do this guy, capital G, G, alright? And so, this is gonna be, they're similar mass, so it's 1/8 mass times 1/8 mass, okay? Does that kind of make sense? Now, let's not forget what's gonna happen with r. r is 1/2, r, and this is squared, okay? And so, what's gonna happen is... We're at what, 1/64, right? m squared, I'm gonna leave the G out for now. I can put the G right here, just for the sake of, and I'll put the r squared over here. And so, this is gonna be 1/4, right? So reciprocal, oops, 4 over 64. So I don't even know...
F over 16.
1/16 F. Are we good? That wasn't too bad. That was like the problem that we saw yesterday, okay? So this was like the problem we saw yesterday where there are two spheres, r and r, oops. But in this case, it was cut in half. So everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Alright. What was the other one you said?
21 and 22 were just like it.
21, let's see. You wanna try 21? A planet has 4 times the radius of Earth, but the same dens- oh, but the same density as the Earth. So what is the acceleration due to gravity of the planet compared to Earth? Okay. What I'll do is also, on this video, in the description, I'll put a link to the questions so that folks who are watching this, they can see it, okay? So here we go again. A planet has 4 times the radius of Earth, so we'll just sketch that out. 4 r Earth, right? But it has the same density as the Earth, okay? So, this particular volume is gonna... Sorry, mass. Because this is the...
Yeah, yeah, mass.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not thinking. Okay, so that's mass, so that means this r is now gonna be, it's gonna, the mass is gonna go up by 16, and then 4 times 16, 32, 64? Okay? So, here we go. Fg equals big G, gravitational constant. And you guys need to know how to derive this, so, okay? But this guy is 64, so I need to rearrange this. So I'm getting rid of this, and I have a 64, so I'm gonna move the G. Yep, I'm gonna move the G so we can...
Oh, massive planet.
Yeah, that's the planet. It's 64 the mass, because we took it from the volume, okay? And so, we have G, and I'm gonna call this E, because it's not Earth, but it's a larger planet. So, now, I'm gonna put the G over here, I'm gonna put the r squared over here, just so that it's out of my way. 64 here, okay? And 16, so 64 divided by 16, 4. So it's gonna go up by 4 times, um, right there, a. Yeah, I'm sorry that I, I'm doing that lately, I'm going... Because I did that yesterday. But I'm gonna move aside so that people can see that. I had somebody comment on one of the videos, "Nice profile, it's not about me." No, it's not about me, it's about you guys seeing and learning. You know, I don't care. No, because I guess sometimes my face is partially in here, and then it's out. Okay, um, how about something like this one? Just for the sake of, you got a top view here, something going in a circle, right? And let's see, it's going this way. It's a cart, right? And for the top view, so I'm gonna act...
Mr. Brazil, is this from the worksheet or is this on your own?
This is on my own. Okay, so this is a top view, and actually, I'm gonna slice it in a second, so top view. Okay, and I probably should've cut it partway. Alright, and so, it's on top of a lab table. So here's r. Here's an arrow, okay? And v is going this way, alright? So this is on top of a lab table, right?
Yeah.
So is the half a circle?
Yeah, it's all good. Okay, so here's the side view, here's the lab table, and here's this cart. Right? And you're gonna, it makes this arc, and it's gonna fly off of here, and where is it gonna land on the ground? Okay? So I have some stuff I need to give you, right? Need to give you at least this height, okay? So let's make that height a nice lab table distance of probably 85 centimeters, okay? Let's give you a radius, oh, up here. What would be a good radius?
Wait, so the bottom one?
So the ra- yeah, side view.
That's the side view, okay.
Yeah, thank you, I should've wrote that down. Side view, okay? And let's say the radius, so a good radius, what, 25 centimeters? Because I'm gonna say something ridiculous to get a speed going here. How about a period? Oh, let's give the cart a mass too. Let's give it a mass of, you know, those little carts, a mass of, what, 10.0 grams? Okay? And, let's give it a period... Oh, what's a nice period?
2/4.
Oh, no, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go 0.25 seconds. Yeah, okay. Can you figure out where it's gonna land on the ground? Because this is circa centrifugal acceleration, okay? Centrifugal acceleration, or force I should say, centrifugal force, and projectile motion. So, because the test is gonna have some question from the past, because I love you guys. So what are you gonna do first?
Find the velocity.
What? Yeah, find the velocity, that's gonna leave the table, so what are you gonna use?
The A for...
Go ahead. Okay, so we got that, let's start with that. I think that's, yeah, this is within. So A equals v squared r, go ahead.
There's the other one that looks like a 4 pi r.
Oh, so you have this one. 4 pi squared r over what? T squared, okay. Okay, that's a start. I think I may have to give you something here, huh?
Or do we need to find the circumference to know the velocity?
Well...
Because we already have circumference, it's built into that.
It's built into it.
Yeah, but we need the velocity, not the acceleration, right?
Mm-hmm. So how do you, how are you gonna solve?
So you can just do v squared equals 4 pi squared over t.
v squared equals 4 pi squared, what else, Amy?
Oh, d squared. Wait, why is, I just cancelled out the r. Oh, no, you can't do that.
Okay, squares. Yeah, because we, and then, the sweet deal to this is, v equals, and it looks like everything comes out, so you're gonna get 2 pi r over, oh sweetness! Okay, does that work? You could solve it, you could save it for later, you could use that later, but you could put it all together, whatever you want. You rather do it now?
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay, so 2 pi, uh, 0, parentheses 0, 2/5 seconds. No, not seconds. I put the, I put the wrong thing, oh, look at that. It was 25. That sucks when I'm putting that, huh?
2.2.
Yeah, it is, that's what I'm saying. I mixed them up in my head, so you don't wanna do that on your test, right?
The velocity is just too high. 6.2, 6.28.
6.28?
Yeah.
Meters per second, that's good. So this is what, so what direction is this velocity?
The x direction.
Yeah, it's the x. So this, this v is equal to our Vx.
Cosine d.
Yeah. There's no, actually, are you leaving out an angle?
No.
Nope. We're gonna, a lab table's tend to be horizontal, so we're good. Okay, so what are you gonna do next, after that?
Oh, are you gonna say delta y?
Oh, you have to solve for t.
Solve for, yeah, see, remember? I'm gonna stand right here because I want this on the screen. Our gang sign. You got Vx, Vy, Vx, and the tangent velocity, right? All three velocity in projectile motion, it doesn't matter whether it's going up or falling down, they share the what? Same time. And so, if we know the x going this way, and if we know the time, we can find where it's gonna land. Okay, so what's the equation we're gonna do, use for time?
t equals square root of 2 delta y.
Delta y, go ahead.
Oh, I already added, delta y will...
V naught y t.
Vy naught y t.
Plus 1/2 gt squared.
1/2 gt squared. What happens to this guy though?
Zero.
Yeah, you need to, you need to remember that the, in the y component, the velocity here at this portion, okay? Vy naught is equal to zero. Vy naught...
Oh, yeah.
Okay? It gets faster as it falls down, right? We're hoping? Okay, good. Alright. So this guy is zero, so this is gone, so now we can solve for t. So t equals square root, 2, 2 delta y over g. That's kind of one that should be in your heads a little bit, okay? Yeah, somehow you're gonna have to absorb, yeah, no, it's like, that's one that you kind of need to kind of almost know cold, okay? So, 0.85 meters, 9.80 meters per second squared, square root. Okay? I don't have, somebody plug that in already?
0.416.
Obviously, we're not worried about sig figs right now, we should, but our final answer should be in two sig figs. Okay, so now how are you gonna find the distance across?
You do, change x equals vy naught y.
Yeah, plus 1/2.
Okay, delta x, that's it.
That's 18 squared cancelled.
Yeah. Or the dollar t there.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, let's use the full equation, that's brilliant. So yeah, v, v naught x, t plus 1/2 at t squared, and you're right, there is no acceleration, so people remember, so that goes to zero, and that's why this is Vx. V naught is the same, the final and the initial is the same, so I'm just gonna Vxt, okay? And so, we have our speed from up here, 6.28 meters per second. 26.12? Yeah. So the old guy was able to figure out a decent period. So what was the distance again, Danny?
Uh, 26.12.
26, what? What'd you get?
Oh, 0.4, is it 0.4? I put 4.
Okay, so what's the answer?
I take on a, on a...
Okay, yes ma'am. What is it?
2.6.
2.6? That's quite a distance. That's like, that's quite a swing. What'd you guys think?
Good.
Good? Take a picture, yeah, take a picture. Yeah, it's gonna be a little, when editing these videos, it takes a little bit. Okay?
Oh, can you do one of the forces with more than one object, like the worksheet?
Like the, oh yeah, in an angle?
It was, yeah.
The square one's good.
Yeah, it was this one, number 6.
I feel the love, Danny. So we're doing number 3? Yeah, I know, number 6, m3. Okay, I'll set it up.
Okay, yeah.
He takes it away. Let me put it up on my computer. Well, I need to know the masses, okay? So, so we got m1, what is its mass?
Uh, m1 is 12.0 kilograms.
12.0 kilograms?
Yeah.
Okay, 2?
Um, 14.0 kilograms.
14.2?
Yeah, uh, 14.0 kilograms, yeah.
Kilograms?
Yeah. 3, and 3 is 13.0.
13.0 kilograms.
And m4 is 17.0 kilograms.
Okay, and then, this distance?
Uh, 14.5.
14.5?
Yeah.
Meters?
Yep.
Okay, and...
2 to 3 and 1 to 4, those 16.2.
Yeah.
So it's a rectangle.
Yeah, 16.2?
Yeah.
And, yeah. So what I'll do is I'll put a slash, this is similar. And these two are similar, okay? Alright, so, there's quite a bit to do. First of all, the question states, let's find the force, and we wanna know the direction that this guy is gonna go, okay? So we're gonna find all the forces that are happening on this. So in other words, you need to get this distance, okay? And that's gonna be the force, 6.67 times 10 to the negative 11, newtons, meter squared, kilogram squared, okay? And then we're gonna take these two masses, 12.0 kilograms times 13.0 kilograms over, and now we gotta find that distance. So Pythagorean theorem, right? So I'm gonna call r31 equals square root, so 16.2 squared plus 14.5 squared. Could somebody give me that distance?
Wait, 16.2...
16.2 squared, yeah, square root. Because it's a rectangle, you said it earlier.
Um, this is 21.7.
21.7?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's meters. Okay, so 21.7 meters, we're gonna put that in here, 21.7 meters, and don't forget to square. So, these problems, I don't care which one, my students tend, the mistake they tend to do is they forget to square that one on the bottom, okay? Yeah, it just happens. You wanna catch that, that's square. So if somebody could get that value, that'd be great. While I write the second one?
It's 472.69.
Oh, you got it that fast kiddo?
It was already on there because I did that, and then I scored it.
Okay, okay kiddo? What is it again?
472... 0.69.
0.69 newtons, yeah. We'll just use more decimal places, that's fine. Okay, so 2, 1, 6.67 times 10 to the negative 11, newtons, meter squared, kilogram squared, okay? And so, 14.0 kilograms, and 13.0 kilograms, and 16.2 meters squared. Did you get a different answer for the top?
Well, I'm just thinking, like, shouldn't it be like some number times 10 to the negative 11?
Oh, oh, you mean, oh, no.
Yeah, I think she meant like that squared, yeah. Yeah, sorry. It's 2.2 times 10 to the negative 11.
Are you telling me you gave me bad information?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's start again.
2.2 times 10 to the negative 11.
2.2 times 10 to the negative 11 newtons. I was wondering, that was a huge amount of force. But I'm going, I'm not the one that's pushing the buttons for now. Okay, what is this one? What's that guy? Well, I'll set up the 3, 4. Oops, that's supposed to be a 3 and a 2, 3, 2.
That's 4.626 times 10.
Okay, 4...
4.626 times 10.
Negative 11 newtons, okay? Okay, 3, 4, be careful of the labels too, I'm, okay? Don't touch it. 0 kilograms, and 14.5. Again, don't forget to square. Okay, do we have that value?
7.01.
What ma'am?
7.4.
No, don't touch that, don't, don't, don't. Okay, let's...
7.01 times 10 to the negative 11.
I did not get the...
Oh, I, confirm.
Wait, yay.
Yay! Okay. So now, set up your components. Okay, do your x component, do your y component, okay? And what's sweet, if we start with 3, 1, we're gonna have to put the cosine, so Fx, 3, 1, equals, okay, this force, newtons. Um, oh, what did we forget? Oh!
Theta.
Theta, we need to get theta. So, we could do theta that's right here, or where do you wanna put the theta? Theta above the line or below, you tell me? Would it be better above? What happens now? This now becomes sine, and this is the x direction. Yeah, I would recommend there so you don't get confused. Because usually, we tend to associate x with cosine. I mean, it would work, but you gotta remember to put sine on this side. So I would put theta down here, that's my recommendation. Yes ma'am?
Could you also do on the top corner?
Yeah, you could, but right now, I'm just, you could, we could, we could, we could do it, oh, put it right here?
Yeah, the right hand.
Yeah, you meant, oh, that what you meant? Okay, that works, we'll do it.
Because then you have your...
Yeah, that's, let's do it. So wait a minute, then that means, what direction is this guy going? If I were to put a coordinate plane here...
It should be 1/8 plus theta.
So, you could do that, or just make that negative. Okay, so let's, yeah, so, because cosine's gonna be negative in this direction, right? So now, we could just get that cosine, let's get it, oh, excuse me, not cosine, the angle.
To get your theta, we're just be inverse tangent, 14.5 over 16.2.
Yeah, so it'd be tan, arctan, um, 14.5 meters over 16.2 meters, okay? And we can get that angle. Are we good? Careful.
What was that?
Okay, see, so did somebody get an angle?
41.8.
Oh, that's sweet. I don't know, I just like it. Okay, so, cosine, 41.8 degrees? Oh, guess what? Our sine is negative. Okay? Okay, so Fy31 is gonna be this force, but negative 2.2 times 10 to the negative 11. It's gonna be downward, cause it's in this quadrant, right?
Yeah.
So sine 41.8 degrees?
This result, if you didn't wanna make the force negative, would you just have to add 180?
Yeah, yeah, so you'd add 180 to this.
Yes, that'd be true.
It'd still make it negative.
Yeah.
It'd still make it negative. That's the beauty. And we should get this answer. Let's get these answers real quick. So that we, let's get these answers so we have it. I'm just gonna take advantage.
For that, I got negative 6.87.
Negative 6.8?
Yeah, seven, yeah, 0.87.
Times 10 to the negative 11?
Times 10 to the negative 12.
12, okay, Newtons, that's. Is that what you got?
Negative 6.27 times 10 to the negative 11.
Okay, would somebody else punch it in to make sure we're?
Wait.
Amy, can I give you this? We're gonna have a third, a third opinion. So I'll erase this and we'll get a confirmation.
Oh, wait.
I got negative 1.64. That's what I got, huh?
Negative 1?
Oh, mine was in radians.
Okay, hang on, yeah, it's degrees. So again, Danny, negative 1?
0.64.
64 times 10 to the negative what? 11, thank you, Newtons. Okay, what is this guy? Yeah, oh, so tomorrow, you need to make sure you're in what?
Degrees.
Degrees. We will be doing radians when we do rotational.
And the y is negative 1.45, negative 1.47 times 10 to the negative 11.
Okay, 7, okay, Newtons. Okay, so now we've got that one. I'm gonna make this a little colorful so that way people can see it. And now we're gonna do Fx3, comma, 2. So again, remember, this is, these are pinned, they're locked in place. If I were to let this mass go, which direction is it gonna go? No, 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 well, if we're in the x component, which direction is it gonna go? Left, so that's negative. So that's gonna be negative also. And what's sweet, there is no cosine or sine. Well, actually it makes sense, it would be negative. Cosine 180 is negative 1. So all it is, is this value. The 4.62 times 10 to the negative 11.
Wait, how'd you get?
Newtons, from up here. That's all it is.
Oh, because there's no x direction, yeah.
No, there is an x direction, no y direction.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So this guy's just 0. Okay?
It's negative because it's in?
It's, if we were to pin these four masses and then let that go, it's.
Can we use reciprocal?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, she's got it. Okay, let me put this another color, not yet. To make sure we're all on the same page and the folks that are watching this are on the same page. Um, Fx34, 3, comma, 4, that's 0, there is no x component. And since this is downward, Y3, comma, 4, and it's downward, that's gonna be negative, but it's gonna be negative this value right here. So that's 7.01 times 10 to the negative 11 Newtons. And now we sum, we sum our ys and we sum our x's. And will it be okay if I erase this piece right here?
And then can you stop after you've summed it each?
What? We're not stopped, cause you're, all that is gonna, once we sum that, we can now get our resultant force. Okay, where this thing's going, and we now, by looking at the negatives, we know it's gonna go downward.
Yeah.
It's gonna go this direction, some force. So we're gonna find that resultant force. And then we're gonna find the direction. Okay? Yes ma'am, sum of the x is what?
Negative 6.26.
So negative 6.26?
Times 10 to the negative 11.
Times 10 to the negative 11 Newtons. Okay, what's our y?
Negative 8.48 times 10 to the negative.
Negative 8, point 8?
Point 48.
48, times 10 to the negative 11, too? Okay, Newtons. Now, let's find our resultant force. I'm just gonna call it Fr. Okay, and so we're gonna square those, square root in squaring these. 26 times 10 to the negative 11 Newtons squared, squared, plus negative 8. 48 times 10 to the negative 11 Newtons squared. Okay, and we're gonna get our resultant force and then we need to find its direction.
This is a long problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. It's a long problem.
These people are.
Yeah, we're recording, but we're live. Mr. Takata and Ms. Redfield just walked in to say hello.
Hi.
Hi, we're working on an intense problem here. It's fine. Okay, so did somebody get this answer?
Uh, 1.05 times 10 to the negative 10.
1.05 times 10 to the negative 10?
Yes.
Newtons. Now we need to find the direction that that mass 3 is gonna go. What are you gonna do?
It'd be, um, yeah, arctan, y over.
Is it gonna be?
Yes.
But remember, we're gonna go.
Well, that's your reference angle.
From here to here.
Yeah, but then you add to 180.
Okay, good. Okay, so this theta, arctan, is gonna be these guys that we're gonna be putting in there, okay? So negative 8.48 times 10 to the negative 11? Over negative 6.2626 times 10 to the negative 11. Okay, and then somebody get that angle?
Oh, that's 53.53 degrees.
53.5?
You have to add that to 180.
And then we need to add that to 180. And that will give us our direction.
233 compared to.
What is it sir?
233.5.
233.5 degrees, we're only good to, so can I erase this? Okay, we'll try to tackle that problem. Now again, we're getting questions that are online, they're conceptual. I'm gonna put a link to this below, so you'll have access to these questions, okay? Alrighty, so here's the question. A satellite of mass M in a circular orbit around the Earth, which has a mass capital ME, uh, I'm gonna go just say ME. And a radius RE, the radius of the Earth, express your answer in terms of Am and Me, so mass sat, RE and G. So A, write the equation to describe gravitational force on the satellite. Write the equation that can be used to find the acceleration of the satellite, okay? And then find the acceleration of satellite when it stays in the same orbit with the radius A is, okay? Um, let's just tackle the first one, okay? So, um, and we have to, it'd be great to show this picture and put it out, but okay. So write the equation to describe the gravitational force on the satellite. Well, that's this thing. We already discussed it. Fg equals big G, come on in. Msat. Yeah, could you check? Msat, big G, MEarth, Msat over ReR squared. Now, I have a little bit of a problem here, because we're not gonna use this E. We know that we have a distance A that they're showing on there. So that's the satellite's distance above. So in other words, I'm gonna take this out. R here is equal to Re plus A minus Re, right? To get that extra little height.
Yeah.
So, oh, so this becomes A. So that's the actual height, so A. And the only reason I wrote this is so that you guys could visually, this is squared. We're trying to find the.
Part of, are we for A?
Um, I'm doing A, part A.
I said G equals G.
Um, write the equation, describe the gravitational force on the satellite. Okay, well, yes, so got that.
Or B.
And then B. So to go on, this is gone, that's gone. So the gravitational field on this thing is just GMe over A squared. Alright? So, now, find the acceleration of satellite when it stays at the same orbit where you say is greater, less than G on the surface. So.
Was Andrew getting his result?
That.
Nah, so this, I'm gonna call this one is Ga.
Can I like go back a few steps?
Yes ma'am.
So you say R equals Re plus A minus Re, what's the purpose of that?
That was just for the, to find this Ga. Now if we find it at the surface, it'll be the same thing. It'll be GE here, okay, at the surface of Earth, equals GMe. If the satellite were on the surface, and now this is gonna be, they put a capital Re squared. So which, which one has greater gravitational force?
The one with her.
Right, because this value is smaller than that one's. If this is larger, it's gonna bring this all down. See, everything up top in the numerator is the same. Okay, it's kinda like this. If I go one half, right? Whoops. Um, one third, and I go one half, which number is bigger?
I mean one half.
Yeah. This is .5, that's .3. 3, yeah, it's alright. See, we, when you're on stage, we make mistakes, this is normal, okay? I've been making mistakes left and right and we catch it. And this is the second time I've filmed a study session, so. Not an excuse, but it is, okay. So you guys can figure out that conceptually, right? Determining the velocity of the satellite that stays at the same orbit. So now, we're gonna use this one and we wanna find the velocity of the satellite.
So solve for A and then?
Don't even need to solve for A.
Just plug in.
We, yeah, see, this must be equal what? To V squared over R, in order to stay there.
Is G?
This is acceleration?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's centripetal acceler, it's centripetal acceleration. So the force that's exerted here has to be equal to centripetal force. So V squared over A, on this case, right? Equals GMe over A squared, well, this is sweet, because one of the As go away. So we gotta, this goes away, that's a 1, so we have one of those. So now, we're V, square root, GMe over A. There's your velocity.
Oh.
Is that cool or what?
That's part D, right?
That is D, yeah, D.
Or C?
Uh, C is the acceleration up here, so here. Here's C, here's D.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, a little all over the place. Okay? Um, and then E, how much work? That's later, but you got the right idea. Cause that was the last slide on this unit's notes, but I'm not gonna do that, I'll do that. When, where do you think that's, when, where do you think that's gonna appear?
The final.
On the final, because we're doing power and work now. Oh, sweetness. Okay, and then the orbital period, you guys could figure out the period. So E, right now you wouldn't do, but that is a fair question for me to ask. So how would you find E? You have everything you need.
2 pi squared of R.
No, no. Guys, you have central, centripetal force, right? So listen, 4 pi squared, oops, squared, I can do that. A over T squared equals GMe over A squared. Yeah.
Or, didn't we figure out though that B equals 2 pi?
Yeah, you can, but here, yeah, but Amy, this comes out actually to a question that's, to an equation that's already in the notes that you guys done. Cause if you do the, this goes over here, reciprocal, so what this is gonna equal is 2 pi, square root, A cubed over GMe. And so now everything's in terms of the variables that they said. And that's very AP-ish.
Can you put this problem on the test or not?
Cause you lace it. I don't know. What if we put something, that would change the density, that won't work. I was thinking something else.
We didn't really go over density that much in class, did we?
Density is kinda like one of those things you know, you should know.
Yeah, but it's not for a day on the test too.
And will you give us the formula?
For the, for the volume of a sphere?
It's on the form sheet, yeah, it is.
That is on the test.
Yeah. It's on, I, I give you the formula sheet, yeah.
Need, is there anything else you need to know for the test?
I don't know, um, I, I was, I am gonna try to throw some form, um. I do have a, I will throw a tougher question, but you just take it in pieces. I'm not gonna make the test as long as the last test. Okay? One, I wanna make sure Mr. Takata can administrate it to fifth period, you know, with comfort. Cause you're gonna get the multiple choice portion. I want him to, you know, give you whatever 15 minutes you're allotted and then the free response, you're timed. Is that cool? So, okay?
Or like the Kepler's laws or Newton's laws?
Well, there's gonna be Kepler's.
Okay, and then?
And you understand that for Kepler's law, the equal areas and all that? You know all three laws?
We, we're not in order, it's in the school.
Yeah, you need to know all, you need to, okay, so I'm gonna do a little editing more. Yes, you're gonna need to know Kepler's laws and you're gonna need to know all three laws. The definition and what it all means. So look it up and know it.
And then Newton's law of universal gravitation?
That's.
Is that on?
Yeah.
The 1 over R squared?
Everything's, that's the inverse square law. So guess what ma'am? It's this. Big G. M1, M2, oh, guess what, R squared. Yeah, and you're gonna, as we progress throughout the year, you're gonna. Yeah, and you're gonna, as we progress throughout the year, you're gonna see more force, a lot of force. And you're gonna see that all of these forces will have different constants. Magnetic fields, electric fields, so on, but they all follow that 1 r squared rule, which is pretty, pretty crazy and cool. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
So I have questions from Jean Coley, and I don't know, it's just the wording for many things, like, it says, on an ice rink, two skaters of equal mass grab hands, spin in a mutual circle every 2.5 seconds.
Right, so, that's the period, so we actually, we can go like this. So, what's their arms length, it was like 80 centimeter, 8, 8.8 meters? Because Annika was trying to measure our arm for that. Okay, so... So r equals 0.80 meters. Okay? Let's go with this. So t, t equals what? What was it again?
Uh, 2.5.
2.5 seconds, right? And the question wants what? What's the gravitational force?
How hard are they pulling on each other?
How hard are they pushing on each other? Pulling on each other, so we want the force. Okay, so here's the deal. Um, do we have the mass of the girls?
Uh, 60 kilograms.
So 60 kilograms, like that? So that's m. Okay? Actually, we have the force. I don't know why we need the period, are you sure that, what is the question?
Uh, two skaters of equal mass grab hands, spin in a mutual circle every 2.5 seconds. Their arms are 8, are 0.8 meters long, individual masses are 60 kilograms. How hard are they pulling on one another?
The way I look at it, this, because we're not looking at rotational motion. If we do F g, we get this, right? F a r. So... And their, their mass of 1, I don't know why we need the, I'm gonna have to look that up. So this is gonna be G m squared r squared, right? It seems like it would just be that force. Because here, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have 4 pi squared r. 4 pi squared r equals t squared. And one of these go away. Yeah, so we end up either using that for force without their mass. I gotta look at the question. You know what number the question is?
68.
What? 68?
I think the part that throws me off is like, in a mutual circle, does that mean there's like...
They're just, because it's like the center of mass.
Mass.
We saw with the hammer.
Yeah, they're in the middle, they're just going around, so the radius is 0.8. I need to look up the question, because I think something's missing. Not to be mean, it's just, and what? What?
It's all it says, that's all the numbers.
Okay, let me see what... I mean, I did...
It's like their acceleration, because like their outward acceleration, and that's like how much force they each need to pull on each other to remain...
In place?
Yeah.
So we, I would find the centripetal force. That's what I would've done, I would've gone...
That would've stayed with the radius to be seen, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't, so I, I would just go F equals m total a r. Right? Seems that's the way I would've, the route I would've gone.
Okay, that makes sense.
Right? Okay, so what page again is this?
Uh, the radius.
133?
The period.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going, I, I'm, my feeling is to go that route. And the, what number is it?
Um, 6, uh, 68.
What?
68.
68. Okay, on an ice rink, two skaters of equal mass grab hands, spin in mutual circle 2.5 seconds. We assume their arms are 0.8 meters, uh, 0.80 meters long, individual masses are 60. Yeah, I would've gone this route. So, 120 kilograms, right? For a total mass. 4 pi, and then, 0.80 squared meters, and 2.5 seconds.
T squared.
Yeah, squared. And actually, wait a minute, why am I going, uh, why am I adding these two? Because one is, one is exerting, it'll be equal and opposite force, so it will cancel. So I'll just go 60. Why, why would I go that route? And now, because, yeah, it'll be equal and opposite, they're, they're in mutual, right? So that means, at their hands, what is the force? Zero. Individually, they pull this.
Ah, okay.
Right?
Because they're in opposition.
Right, they're in opposition, see, one is exerting a force this way, equal force and equal force that way. So right here, it's 0. But if you look...
Oh, no, that's acceleration.
Yeah, that's acceleration, it's inward, but it's gonna be equal and opposite, right? From this point of view, from, from that point.